And the planning commission, the planning commission of Camp Road, the town. Kristen Frank, planning director, Plankery Woods, plan, plan two. And that's all we've got. I want to remind everybody to be sure and speak into the mics and wear these masks. At this time, if you'd like to encourage anyone who wants to submit a general public comment for the fight to speak about the whatever, let me hear it. Speak one back up. Uh, you have another nice, nice, good event for September ninth, twenty twenty one, maybe?
Absolutely.
So.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
A toast. To you now. Alright, at this time, if you'd like to encourage anyone who'd like to submit a general public comment for the fight to speak about the post amendments regarding B K, speak now, or this public comment portion of me. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of an opposition to the rezoning request will get a chance to speak after the presentation. Nancy Simpson.
Good evening. Is this, can you hear me? Is this on? Good enough? Okay. Hi, I'm Nancy Simpson and I am a keeper. Um, I think we have a, a letter from the Indian packet. I come here to support your changes as I know. Uh, it sounds to me like you are proposing to change in ordinance so it will be easier for keepers and more standard to have keep keeping in the town of James Island. So I'm here just to support that. And actually, if I could answer any questions that you might have. Um, I've given my information in the packet regarding we've got great resources in the state. Um, Ms. Kristen Woods contacted me on my position as, um, as a director of the state, um, with state keepers association. And so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Is that what you'd like to do or just comment?
Just invite them.
I felt good reading the material. Is there anything that you would add?
Uh, the material, the color material is that one that was thrown somewhere else. Um, and I just like to add, um, the standard keep, that question is about the safety and, um, and I saw on the keeping, uh, standard textbooks here. Uh, Kristen has taken pictures of that to submit. Um, I suppose it says good tips about urban and where to place hives and that sort of thing. So I don't know what your recommendation would be. I, I suppose that I propose that you do something that will make it standard and safe on everyone's side. And, um, you know, the keep in world, everybody loves bees now in that we need pollinators in general, specifically honeybees. Um, so I would just support allowing people to do hobbies, keep that are on their own property with the regulations in place, I think, as opposed to.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Thanks for the letter also.
Thank you.
Yeah, very helpful.
Tonight, the planning commission will hear a request for the zoning property of a system twenty three, ten five, from the general office, O G, to community commercial CC for the beverage or the later products named back and retail sales and services.
I'll just go through a quick list and then get to a couple of things. Um, sixteen twenty-two Camp Road located adjacent to the intersection of Camp Road and Rutherford Avenue. The property was formerly utilized by the James Island Public Service District as a fire station and currently has been restructured located on it with one of those being a public truck or carport. The parcel included in the current zoning back of the net request is zero point nine three two acres combined and is in the O G zoning district. The parcel is considered a legal non-conforming lot. And red. The applicant, Mr. Roman Rosick, is seeking to rezonate the parcel from the O G zoning district to the CC zoning district to enable the use of the property for the existing home roof supply store, which is called Beer and Beer Supply, as well as adding a brewery, a tavern room, and residential to the property. Sixteen twenty-two Camp Road LLC is the current owner of the subject property. The adjacent parcel to the east is in the city of Charleston and is known limited business. The adjacent parcel to the west is in the city of Charleston's jurisdiction and is known general office. To the south and across Camp Road, the adjacent parcels are in the town zone C C and R S L. And to the north, the parcel is known D R one F, which is diverse residential in the city and is multifamily. And the remaining surrounding area includes parcels in the city, zone general business, as well as parcels in the town, zone C C, O G, and R S L. So just pictures of the subject property from the town. Um, and here's all the structures located on it. Uh, the left is the keepies down Camp Road and then looking west, it's on the rim. Here's the adjacent parcels with the one on the top left, the, the community commercial one across the street, and then top right, the eighteen. I believe on the bottom left, there's a one I can't even spot right. I need to picture of it. Um, according to section one four, one five, three point oh four, three of the zoning amendment, no regulations or that. Affirmations for zoning back in the, approval may only prove if town council determines that following criteria are met. The proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and stated purposes of this amendment. That's response. The comprehensive plan land use element states a need at encouraging intuitive and sustainable development practices. Additionally, the economic development element states a strategy as encouraging a variety of diverse commercial uses that will benefit the town and the whole. Advocate states in letter of intent that B E S is passionate about education for our homebrewers and our expanded location on James Island will allow us to provide classes, competitions, and other outreach programs for the local Charleston community. The applicant also intends on utilizing the existing building. Therefore, this request may be consistent with the comprehensive plan and stated purposes of this amendment. Number two, the proposed amendment will allow development as compatible with existing uses and zoning of nearby property. That's response. Nearby properties have a wide range of existing uses, forest, communication services, transitional housing, single-family and multifamily residential, retail sales, mailing, packaging services, garden supply bank, and social club, in zoning, commercial, general business, general office, limited business, and residential. Immediate adjacent properties are mixed between commercial office and residential uses. Uses that are allowed in the CC zoning district may be compatible with some of the existing uses in the vicinity, including parcels that have the possibility to be utilized or redeveloped with their current commercial zoning. However, the subject property is bordered by multifamily residential to the north and single-family residential across Camp Road. Number three, the town and other service providers will be able to provide adequate water and sewer supply, stormwater facilities, waste disposal, and other public facilities and services to the subject property while maintaining adequate levels of service to existing development. That's response. The subject property has previously been serviced by public facilities in the town and other service providers will be able to continue these public facilities. And number four, that will can provide documentation that the proposed amendment will not result in significant adverse impact on other property in the vicinity of the subject tribe or only environment, including air, water, noise, stormwater management, traffic congestion, wildlife, and natural resources. Response. The applicant's residence states that they are a family operation that will have ample parking and sidewalk for our neighbors nearby. Additionally, the applicant's site plan shows the restaurant and brewery being housed and built in close to Camp Road. The parcel was fully developed with no changes being proposed to existing book friends or vegetation, will have book friends vegetation. And number five, the subject property is suitable for proposed zoning application considering such things as parcel size, parcel configuration, road access, and presence of resources and amenities. In response, the subject property is a legal conforming lot in its current zoning designation of O G. The subject property also meets the minimum standards for a community commercial zoning designation, including parcel size and parcel configuration, and the parcel has two direct access from Camp Road.
Any questions?
Rachel, I see they said that the twenty, I can't remember. Open the post.
Well, this is a conceptual layout. Um, the parking will be configured in the year for months or down to a site that we but, uh.
And I have a question. Why is?
I'm sure it's just a, uh, error.
Oh, alright. Um.
Sure.
So part of the, the way out there by little bit off, measured going there, five, five, two, also right here, sort of, like, like, swoops in when you're having people. But I'm pretty sure we can get that for one.
Now, when I look at it, it's like.
Probably.
It's a survival of the species.
And the reasoning for that driving around like that, I'll say, forcing you to slow down within the property and get an actual pattern. But that is planned to have to slow down. Those packing and save the process. And that's, I'm actually.
Since you're talking about property, I mean, property. Whatever these businesses do, that would be live customers, break all the tests.
Where do you, where do you, um, report?
Well, um, partners know that it's in the neighborhood. People will hire all the time, have a talk, live half mile away by the river. I think people, yeah, we have a couple of spots going, for a broken corner of the property camp, where the bank can build, so it's probably made in the public. As well as, um, I would, very excited that we were coming. Happy to hear that. If they're out, they're also through the travel, that's sort of free. Use spots there and make the part of it. They could. Think you have, really have more apartment to work. This, you know.
No questions?
Are you gonna do this presentation?
Sure. Thank you for a lot of your, trying to do this, something that the partner denied. Kevin and I say, Jeff said, well, what? Um, we've been trying to do this almost ten years, trying to do it, now they've been five, nine months, over ten years. Three years, five, and what else? Long standing, that's, it's about, to James Island. We do, we do, we, we stop, for now, people want to go to some place that have to be paid out, or start in time out, we don't bring million dollars plus whatever, came on, someone else. I think if you ask you, if I ask, like, you might want to know, if you want to, if you do, it's about our own favorite spots, it's not on words, we've got about hundred thirty-five thousand spots, put a little house, for the time being, well, we have a practice of almost.
Yeah, I guess question, another question. I know this is skeptical, though. And I'm curious, that's how we, our physical theory, a little bit of business or that?
No, that was a, I have a background, the P D A background, I just tried, I tried to call it over and stuff, and it's been a week, learned this there. The point I will use that space for, much of the most. Oh.
How many of the plates?
Well, um, some of them will be four hour, at least, and also, for the whole restaurant and, we're also, we've got, like, we'll have a restaurant, we, we, we probably, so.
So your restaurant, it'll bring jobs for some people, uh, and you're a manufacturer too, for, I don't know, for manufacturing, you know, things, for, on James Island. Not, this is good. Uh. Kind of list that all a little bit, for this.
Uh, hopefully, we're in the building, we're, we're, you know, the price of product, uh, um, it's one thing that we go up, the brewery, and your fortress, it's like, versus, you know, inside, we'll ask. We love the warehouse, okay, as well, it's not the one that, that, you know, people gather, that are, which, you know, friends, friends, and this. And we, that's where it, right, right, we're, 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 adding, adding, in the existing building, we're, 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 we're,
no, that, that's, that's, to me, that's a good answer. And, and if it was, you could stop doing it. You know, if, if it become a problem, you could stop doing it, that's true. So now we think a lot of this is people watching football games. They wasn't saying, they're watching football games, it's like that. I was, I run by there too, and, uh, I was trying to figure out what they were gonna do with it. And I, and I said, it's gonna have to be somebody that's very creative. So I guess that's you.
Hopefully.
Yeah, I would move to consent about parking and consent of residential neighbors for that way, and the, uh, residential for the property, too, can, but I'm, but I'm just, that, in fact, um, because you allow the worker, maybe, and, you tell already the status, the neighbor quality is out there, really, um, for, overall party. I was just thinking about different things or people parking, um, you know, somebody law, something like that, that would just be, you know, my, I'm just making this, for, you want to work out, but as soon as those, my concerns have been addressed so far.
So, personally, you don't have any plans to have any alcohol using?
We love to use that, that little shed behind you, that's not a covered area. I use that, it's not for the scene, look, big fire pit, probably, to guard things and take advantage of the nice, beautiful tree, but, but, you got, uh.
Yeah, is your name Roman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, when, when I go by there, I hear the seat, or out, the property. I don't see children playing there, uh, and things like that, and that's, that's a good thing, you know. What are you gonna do with the town?
Uh, I don't think I have anything but for.
That's a good idea. It's a little, looks a little ricky.
Yeah, I'm a point driver. Big race driver, sorry, I don't think they have a lot to do with that.
Most of you like to leave your asset to that, you know. I was sort of all curious, what someone could do with any buildings that were associated with, so like to amend the plan.
I think, um, we had an opportunity there, um, hundred, being, you, I think, it's, it's to be, uh, four thousand hour business, which can, incredibly, business set, more than a full time, yes, allowing capacity, so we, we can do that, I feel like we're doing, we're, but this place allows us to build.
Four thousand, I said, uh. So they're here for a month?
A day.
A year.
A day, I think, we'll talk about some of these small property.
You can have a whole bout, that would be good.
Okay.
Alright, time is.
There's Mary, who wants to start? Uh, Chris Allen, yes?
I just, Chris Allen, six, six, five, Horace and Court, I'm ready, uh, much more than ever, but I'm thrilled to see you, any sites coming, check out. Uh, I think, like, we all alluded to, but I heard that the fire station's gonna be dead, it'll be sold, and I got a little nervous about what was gonna go there, I don't know, and then hearing that it's just up for sale, up for lease, or how it was gonna go, but when I heard of the breweries, um, coming from Washington, I got very excited. I think it's great for James Island, I love that it's a local group, coming and doing it, I think that's what, what we need on James Island, we're up, and that's what we all love, the founders, is these local businesses. And so I heard you, to approve the rezoning, I strongly, strongly supported, I think it's an excellent file. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What do you suppose? Terrence. Drink water.
Believe it or not. Well, I played open here, this by one fourteen, um, and I really opened it there mostly because it was several through the area, or the old, they own the shop, uh, and I've been chasing this room, um, has a lot of help along the way, obviously. Uh, it's not that we're looking to go to James Island specifically because we saw something here, um, but because we think it really ties with what our vision is, and actually character of James Island in general, really binds with who we want to be as business. Um, and, you know, he mentioned a courthouse and things like that, we'd love to get it, some local artists, be a bit of a public entity, um, it, it'd be good to increase our, our home roof side as well, uh, people who, almost all of us are very, very, very passionate about the product itself, you know, that's not passionate, it's, 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 it's great, it's forever, it means a whole joy. So, uh, it's an adjusted business, but it's a real big, big work, not for a long, long time, so, uh, we certainly have a lot of motivation to, to make it, to, and, and, that's like, for all the girls.
Thanks, Mr. Bro. Yes? That's it? That's it?
Um, and I'm actually a business partner with Kevin and Laura, so, I'm with you, except the shop, I basically started my own, uh, and even that outlets, uh, they were, what came, and, you know, so, Roman has been, uh, had, and, and, for a long time, we'll be helping that shop. So, and we're open, ready, had been our, and I just think, the community, um, just, just, uh, the way the community is, to the people that live here, I think, I think we'd be a good fit with that, just nice, easy, laid back, you know, to bring the jobs in and bring the, the team also. I was just moving forward, I think this is a good, you need, it's a good one.
Is there anyone, products which should be on our session? Answering the questions. It's, it's, I quote, for the questions, uh, this, we have a, um, questions to approve?
I'm agreeing, I'm approving the change, as, you know, in the standards. That, that's, thank you.
That's, uh.
Thank you.
Discussion?
I'm reminded about this, I think that, uh, there's well aligned with the town of James Island, needs a lot of desire, and I, there's still the best one.
And I've been thinking about it a lot, too, I feel, I feel the same way. A, uh, layback environment like that, so close to life thinking, people, life thinking people, I think is a real problem. And bringing in a, a business, uh, it's gonna make profits, it's a good thing.
I agree, I think, uh, I mean, it's a great, this like fashion, I can't imagine what else would be put in, uh, and this is just, it seems like it's, uh, match made in heaven. Anything more?
No.
Okay. Uh, and everyone, in favor of approving the change, say, uh, say, ah.
Ah.
I suppose. Yes. Town council will hold a public meeting on the first reading on the rezoning at the next, at the November eighth committee, second reading, which tells council December sixteenth. Put this proposed amendment to the town, James Island. This proposed amendment to the town, James Island, zoning and planning, great question, would, and living, little bit, staff, remember, this will be, to answer any questions, the waters.
Um, so this is about agriculture and the, so currently, right now, we've now allowed agriculture and, and, um, in the R S L zoning district with a special exception from the board's zoning deal. And so that will require an applicant to go in front of the board, it's a two hundred dollar fee, and, um, and the board will watch the conditions on the, on the application. And so this amendment is the separate recommendation to kind of eliminate that red tape for keepers. And, um, so I can kind of go through what the recommendations are. So this is the livability ordinance, which should, would be near also, we know, in the regulation, the one that, it would be in livability, just because, um, livability involves, you know, addressing things like animals, animal harmful nuisances, um, and things like that. So, um, the first one would be, B highs will be committed for personal use only, subject to the following conditions, and A, must be located on property of detached, single-family homes. B, two highs for ten thousand eight hundred ninety square feet, which is a quarter of an acre, is allowed for the parcel. C, highs shall not extend into the front and that back. B, highs shall maintain healthy and sanitary manner for the claim and convenient ownership of the site. B, highs and any associated structures shall meet all applicable provisions of the second land development regulation ordinance, shall be at least fifteen feet from any property line. And, uh, nothing in this amendment to this chapter shall be named to override private de restrictions or other member association requirements that prohibit or violate that child, that child property. And so, um, this portion would be zoning ordinance, and in reference to the, so the keeping of these, I shall be allowed, that's for use in accordance with the conditions contained. Um, the town may issue a special permit to allow more highs over our prohibited by ninety point eighteen with consideration given to. Um, the town may issue a special permit to allow more hives, over, prohibited by 9.18, with consideration given to the following. Um, the number of hives allowed based on the side of the requesting party's residential lot, number of additional hives the party is requesting, a house beyond the height allowed, and geographical location, including the suburban and rural character of the surrounding neighborhood of the residential lot or the requesting party, the Irish house more hives than allowed. And a requesting party's needs of isolating all houses and properties with not becoming used to the surrounding homeowners. Homeowners within 150 feet of the property closest property lot to the closest property lot of the requesting party, and find a letter consisting of the number of additional hives to be housed at that location, and we can revoke the permit. This, this part allowing more than would be allowed with the square footage allowance, is, um, just because of the the back, there's, in some of the majority areas in the town, some are rural, some are more suburban. Um, and so, based on those things, we can, um, make a determination on that. And, um, I did get, I didn't just make the, I, um, did get help from some expert, um, and these are a couple of people that Susan Simpson, who spoke earlier, she's the state representative for the Charleston Area Keepers Association, and Joan Strong, who's the president of the Charleston Community Garden, and a, a, area manager for Puntin' Agrologist Station. Um, so they helped out with the wording, and that's useful information that we can do in the package.
Yes. What about all the condoms? Just one way.
So, um, number, or one, and must be located on property of detached, single-family.
Basically, we're talking about discretion, like, for the, and, and, the options are pretty, it's, um, an application. Well, still, we need, uh, else to the, the keeper.
No. Unless, you know, like, where they want to leave the chickens. Um, you can have a certain amount of chickens per square footage of a lot, if you live in a rural area, and your lot's still that size, you can request the additional chickens with a chicken permit that we have. So, we can have, we, we would have, you know, same, same thing, so that would cost a residential permit, and the town is 25 dollars.
Yeah, or business.
Right, well, yes.
Any other questions?
Can you get a permit for one hive? To buy at only 9,000, are you?
Yes.
Um, do we have a right to change the, uh, where you, so, uh.
Second.
So we'll have discussion. More basic about the. Uh, all in favor of the change in the, the order of allowing staff to control the permitted for the keepers? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Next.
Town council will hold a public hearing, first reading of this now, standing as a right. Second reading will be held at the council December, the council's December 16th meeting. I have that on it.
The, the thing, the next thing is.
The, uh, today for the next plane commission meeting, September 11th, 2020. So, it is, uh.
Which is that?
That, oh, that's one. So we need to, we can't have a meeting on the one, that's, uh, so, so, so. What the, what is?
So Wednesday, have a meeting already scheduled, so Tuesday, that week, would work, if you guys.
Which would be November the ninth. I moved that we, uh, change the meeting date, November 18th, to another night. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's no further business is moving with James Island, planning mission stands down.
You walk down the private line, it's all rock.
I want to thank everybody for allowing me to go to the next step, um, you all like, so we have to say that, like, the.
I know, I know.